Next item, please.
Employee recognition.
So I'm going to call up Ms. Ali Bassey. We started this new recognition model where we go into the schools and we provide employees from three different classifications with recognition, and it's based on them nominating each other. They don't know we're coming. It's a surprise. And in some cases, it's been very, very heartwarming, and so we appreciate them. And I'm going to let Ms. Ali Bassey, I know Ms. Platsky was the architect of this new model for the Human Resources Department.
Thank you. Is Courtney Dubiak here? Ms. Courtney Dubiak? I thought she was there. You are. I couldn't spot you earlier. Come on up, Ms. Dubiak. And also, Yehav Matar. I think Yehav is, there he is. Thank you. I couldn't see you earlier. So I'd like to, and there's a third recipient. He's not able to be here. So I'd like to introduce to you Ms. Courtney Dubiak. She's a speech and language pathologist at Whitmore Bowles Elementary School. She's been working in the district for 18 years, and she was nominated for her mentorship of newer speech and language pathologists and her patience and her support for her colleagues. Thank you, Ms. Dubiak. Do you want to say a few words? You don't have to. You could just say whatever.
I just want to say thank you so much for the recognition. It was really a surprise. When I got a knock on my door, I had no idea that it would be the superintendent, human resources, my director of special education. And it was just a very emotional time, and it was a nice surprise. And I tell everybody, Whitmore, Dearborn is my second family. I love coming to work every day. The kids that I work with just give me a smile each and every day. There are very many challenging days, but it's those challenging days that make me better as a speech pathologist. So I just want to say thank you for the recognition, and I'm so thankful to work for a wonderful district.
Thank you for what you do every day.
I just want to say, Ms. Dubiak, you and the three recipients, it made our day, really. Like, it was just such a great highlight of the day, each day that we got to do this. So, thank you. Yehav, I'd like to introduce you to Yehav Matar. He's only been with Dearborn Schools for a month. Is that right? For a month. And he is a special education paraprofessional at McCullough-UNIS, K-8. It's his first year with Dearborn Schools, and he was nominated for quickly developing relationships with the students in the middle school emotional impairment program. So Yehav was super surprised when we arrived. So Yehav, I want to say thank you, and go ahead and take, say a few words. No pressure.
I don't know what to say, honestly. I was very surprised when you actually showed up. Not the funnest thing to hear when the principal needs to talk me in the hallway. Felt like I was a kid again. It was weird. But I do appreciate the recognition. I wasn't expecting it. It is a very tough job. I mean, it was pretty easy to develop rapport with the students, which is a good thing for me. But there are hard days. Today was a hard day. Sometimes they don't want to cooperate. Other days, they do. So taking it one step at a time, but what works, works, I guess. Yeah. Oh, yeah, I'm a 14th graduate. I'm a 14th graduate. 2020.
Thank you.
The third recipient is not able to be here today, but I'd like to say a huge thank you for Mark Rumel. Mark Rumel is the principal of O.L. Smith Middle School. Mark Rumel has been with Dearborn Schools for 19 years. He was nominated for his ability to communicate with staff, students, and parents to make sure needs are met and to best support student learning, and also for providing leadership and a positive outlook on every situation. And honestly, that couldn't have been summarized any better. So congratulations to Mark Rumel, and he was also quite surprised. So thank you to Mark. I just wanted to say thank you for Courtney Platsky, HR Director. She is the one who put the program together and has executed it and has it on all of our calendars and gets the cards and the cool gifts together for our recipients. So thank you to Courtney as well. Thank you all. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah, congratulations to all of them. I just want to say, I spoke to Mark last week just before Thanksgiving, and he really wanted to be here, but he had obligations, a banquet for his own children. So otherwise, he would have been here, and he was very appreciative of the recipient of the award.
Next item, please.
Commendations.
Hi, I'm Livy Pilkins from Etzel Ford, and I'm here to say the commendations for you guys. I don't have them, like, in a piece of paper, so I'm going to use my phone. For the district commendations, we would like to give commendations to Courtney Dubiak, Yehav Matar, and Mark Rumel. The three employees were the first employees of the month after coworkers nominated them with a give a high five form. Each employee is from a different job classification: instructional, non-instructional, or administrator. Ms. Dubiak is a speech and language pathologist at Whitmore Bowles. Mr. Matar is a special education parapro at UNIS Middle School, and Mr. Rumel is a principal at Smith Middle School. We would also like to give commendations to the 60 teachers and staff who volunteered for professional development sessions on November 5th, which was Professional Development Day for teachers. Topics included instructional learning and strategies in English, math, science, and social studies; social engagement and technology; social studies; special education; social emotional learning; and life skills. Commendations as well to Kelly Kebasek, Bob Harrison, and Sophia Abdallah, who organized the teacher-led professional development sessions. And lastly, commendations to Mark Andrews, Director of Operations, who successfully completed the Michigan School Business Official Leadership Institute. The year-long program earned significant commitment by the participants and helped them develop their leadership skills. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Mohamed Abu Hassan, senior at Etzel Ford High School. Commendations to Jace Bauman-Badlo, who is a semifinalist for the National Merit Scholarship. To qualify, students must take the PSAT/NMSQT in their junior year and score among the top students in their state. Less than 1% of this year's seniors will be named semifinalists. Badlo is a 13th-year student at the Henry Ford Early College Advanced Manufacturing. Commendations to Etzel Ford High swimmer Maria Al-Kutsi for her performance at state competition in November. Al-Kutsi finished ninth in the 200 IM and finished fourth in the 500 free. Her fourth-place finish makes her Allstate in the 500 free. Commendations to the following 14 high students for passing the State of Michigan Auto Mechanic Test: Hamid Aoun, Hussein Shaloub, Ali Atwi, Camila Cruz, Jawad Khashish, Mahmoud Hashem, Nasir Muhammad, Rayyan Mahdi, Hussein Swaydan, Mohammed Sayhoud, Jawad Taraf, and Ishaq Awada. The students obtained their brakes mechanic license in steering and suspension. Commendations to district music teacher Jeffrey Kelm for providing a welcoming environment so all students can be a part of the school community. Mr. Kelm received a heartfelt letter from a parent praising him for seamlessly including her special-needs son in the after-school music club at Smith Middle School. The parent wrote, "I wanted to recognize Mr. Kelm for going above and beyond to make inclusion a reality for my son. To others, this might not seem like a big deal, but to us, it was everything." And that concludes the commendations. Thank you.
Thank you. Good job.
Can I ask just a second? I've never seen anyone more excited than Trustee Thorp, but Livy, when I saw her at the football game, for the picture with the sign. So David, can you help me out here? We're just going to do one of these quickly.
That's okay, Mr. President.
Of course. Jim, come on, be a sport. Get out there, Jim. Come on, Jim, you can do it. One last time. That's good. Thank you, Dr. Maliko. Next item, please.
Acknowledgement of donations.
Good evening, everyone. The donations tonight start with $243.99 has been offered to Salina Elementary or Intermediate School by the Dearborn Ad Foundation to be used for a classroom rug. A donation of $320 has been offered to Salina Intermediate School by the Dearborn Ad Foundation to be used for flexible seating. A donation of $185.93 has been offered to Howard Elementary School by the Dearborn Ad Foundation to be used for writing support. A donation of $300 has been offered to Maples Elementary School by the Dearborn Ad Foundation to be used for newly arrived students to attend Disney on Ice performance. A donation of $200 has been offered to Etzel Ford High School by the Dearborn Ad Foundation to be used for a portable PA. A donation of $104 has been offered to Salina Intermediate School by the Dearborn Ad Foundation to be used for play animals for kindergarten classrooms. A donation of $675 has been offered to Etzel Ford High School by the Dearborn Ad Foundation to be used for safety blades and other art supplies. A donation of $10,000 has been offered to Dearborn Public Schools by an anonymous donor to be used for homeless students and those in financial hardships. A donation of workout equipment, including a treadmill, dumbbells, bike, and elliptical machine, have been donated to Dearborn Public Schools by Hype Athletics to be used to support the health and wellness of all ASC employees. A donation of $200 has been offered to Hague Elementary School by Schweitzer Engineering Laboratories Inc. to be used to support the fifth-grade Ford Druge field trip. Thank you to all the donors. That concludes the donations. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Approval of minutes, approval of minutes of the following Dearborn Board of Education meeting. Executive session evaluation closed Monday, November 11th, 2024, Board Report 24-63. Regular P-12 meeting, November 11th, 2024, Board Report 24-64. City Relations Committee meeting, Thursday, November 14th, 2024, Board Report 24-65. Recommended action, make any necessary corrections and move approval of these minutes.
So move support.
The motion moved by Trustee De Ambrosio, supported by Trustee Moser. Are there any corrections? Are there any objections to the motion? Hearing none. Motion is approved. Next item, please.
Union leadership commentary. This new section of the Board of Education meeting is being added to further enhance the already strong commitment and longtime partnership between district administration and all bargaining units. Both instructional and non-instructional union members serve on a wide variety of standing and ad hoc committees that drive the work and decision-making in the Dearborn Public Schools. In addition, administration meets monthly with the leadership team of all unions, as well as a group meeting with the union presidents. These meetings are not required by an extension of the collaborative partnership that has long existed in the Dearborn Public Schools. This new section will further enhance the commitment to valuing all suggestions, views, and opinions brought forth by all staff members in the district. The Association of Dearborn Schools Administration, ADSA, would not like, they would not speak today. The Dearborn Federation of School Employees, DFSE, do not wish to speak today. The Dearborn Federation of Teachers, DFT, Ms. Kathy Martin would like to come to speak regarding acceleration.
Hello. Back in front of you for the last time this year. I hope you all had a great Thanksgiving. Everyone back there, too. I'm here to talk about acceleration again. I think this is the third time this school year. Things are still not getting any better. Issues are not improving. So first, I want to make it clear that teachers not only understand the need for acceleration or something like it, but they've been begging for something to help our students with literacy and math skills at all grade levels. As a matter of fact, teachers have been sounding the alarm for at least a decade. Last year, the school board saw that something needed to be done. So you, along with classroom teachers, asked the district to implement a plan to improve our students' core academic skills. A committee was formed that included classroom teachers, as well as coaches, administrators, ancillary staff, et cetera. Some very clear takeaways from those many meetings were that teachers are stretched thin, and as much as they believe our students need help, the full burden cannot fall upon their shoulders. Teachers clearly stated they need time to get to know students and to implement interventions that are meaningful and helpful to them, and those students need to be taught by experts in that area. We need interventions that target specific skills. We cannot have a one-size-fits-all approach. We have students who cannot sound out words in middle school. We have students who don't understand the basics of reading. This is not a teacher failure. For years, districts, not just Dearborn, implemented curriculum that harmed students who were not natural readers. All the while, teachers voiced their concerns over this type of curriculum. Elementary teachers are specifically trained in teaching reading. It's always said that you learn to read from kindergarten to second grade and third grade on up, you read to learn. So those teachers at the lower elementary know how to teach reading, actually, elementary teachers. It's part of their curriculum. I had to take a sixth-credit reading course. Secondary teachers do not. Middle school teachers do not have that same training. We're asking teachers who are not experts in specific fields to perform a job for which they have not been trained. I will say we have many instructional coaches and some teachers who do have that training because they're certified K-8 or, you know, and they happen to be at the middle schools. But they are not always the ones implementing these interventions. During our meetings with the district administrators, we were very clear that we cannot succeed without teacher buy-in or by dumping more work on an already full plate. After the committee's last meeting in May, we did not have a clear picture for acceleration. There were still some wrinkles that needed to be ironed out. It was promised that a program would not be rolled out prematurely. Those promises were not kept. Acceleration was rolled out at the start of the school year with several kinks. It required hours of prep. The rollout of the teaching packets that the teachers had to use with the students was disorganized, and there was no actual decision on how to monitor progress. I understand that you can find teachers who may try to refute what I'm saying. To be honest, there's nothing to refute. Last month, I presented a survey that indicated many teachers are struggling with the implementation of acceleration while some are not. Forty percent of the teachers who completed the survey are spending at least 30 to over 60 minutes less with their own families just to prep for acceleration, not to mention all the hours that they already dedicate to our students. We have rows of teachers behind me who are here with one day's notice on Monday night at 7 o'clock after Thanksgiving break to tell you acceleration is not working the way it's being rolled out right now. This is demoralizing to teachers and prevents them from doing all the best they can for our kids. Acceleration is going to end up harming some students as opposed to helping them. Something needs to change. I've met with the district leadership. We've talked about things, but nothing has actually changed. And teachers are getting to the point where they feel like they're hitting their heads against the wall because they know that they aren't doing what they need to do for some of these students because they can't.
President Martin, you mentioned, you said something in your comments that you can find teachers that will tell you otherwise.
Yeah.
I didn't go looking, but a lot of teachers did reach out to me, and they're saying, "Let's give this a chance. Let's see where we end up at the end of the year." Let me finish, please. There was a teacher, I mean, that's been in the district for over three decades. She said, and she didn't mention COVID not one time, so can't blame anything on COVID. She said, "This past decade, this is the worst she's seen it." And she actually commended the administration and, you know, at least what we're trying. I know students are behind, and I know, there's no doubt in my mind, we put a lot of pressure on teachers. But, I mean, that's what we're here for. Students, students first can't be just a sign that you roll out. That's what we're all here for, the teachers, the board, the administration. And I know there's a lot of discussions happening between teachers, yourself, the administration, and I keep saying this over and over, I hope to God that at least it's going in the right direction. If it's not, let's see what we can do. I mean, what is the next step? It's, go ahead.
I mean, right now, our contract is actually being violated, and we've been telling teachers, "Let's see what we can do." Middle school teachers in our contract are supposed to teach no more than 25 sections a week. They are now, with acceleration, teaching 29 sections a week, because acceleration is four days a week. We have not filed a grievance because we really want to make this work. But truly, the contract is being violated. We need something to help our students, but we can't count on free labor of teachers to do it.
Okay, so myself, myself, I'm struggling with this, because I have a lot of close friends that are teachers in the district. And is it, is it the compensation? Is it the violations of the contract? That's, that's legal to handle. I don't want, I don't want that part to make it look like, you know, acceleration is just not working, period.
I don't say it's not working, period. In some classrooms, it is working.
Okay.
And that's, that's where we're having the struggle, because teachers are saying, "I can see the benefit."
Okay.
"But I'm worn out, and I don't feel like I can be effective the whole year doing this." That's the problem. Some teachers who are actually reading experts, who are actually math experts, are really seeing growth in some of the kids. But when you have some kids in a classroom where the teachers are not experts in these fields, maybe we're not seeing the same growth. But at the end of the day, the workload is overwhelming.
So, the world I come from, you put something together, and you revisit it six months later, and you make adjustments. Do you feel like this administration is willing to sit down with you, make the necessary adjustments?
Some adjustments have been made, in that work was removed from one group of people and placed upon another group of people. So then, one group had their load lightened a little bit, and another group had their load increased. So it's like, we're not fixing the problem. We're kind of putting Band-Aids on it. Again, a lot of teachers agree, something needs to be done, and they want to help. They just can't keep up this pace.
So, teachers are saying, yes, something has to be done. And we, the board, heard from those teachers, and a couple years ago, we were directing Dr. Maliko, "Let's do something."
Yeah.
So, we can't talk about possibly, you know, your words, not mine, that there's violations of the contract. And if, I guess, if there's a fix, what is the cost? That's a whole separate discussion. But the way I'd like to see it is, I want you to continue the discussions, and now, I'm just speaking for myself here, continue these discussions, and whatever glitches come up, let's talk about them. Let's, I mean, talk to the, let's make some adjustments at the end of the semester. Let's take some major, let's get that committee back together at the end of the school year and make those necessary adjustments, because we all have one goal in mind, right? It's all about the students.
I'd like to say, during those committee meetings, we put out many ideas, and a lot of those ideas, teachers agreed to them and thought, "Okay, this is sustainable. This is something we can do." Those ideas were not utilized. If you want people to succeed, the best thing to do is to give them an expert to help them. One of our ideas was to create one teacher who works with all of the kids, who does acceleration throughout the day that becomes a class. That idea was not utilized. We were told it was for financial reasons. It's a great idea, but, but it's like, if you want something fixed, you got to put your money where your mouth is. And there are ways to help our students, and not piecemeal. There are ways to give real interventions where you see progress month over month. There are ways to do it, and the teachers know those ways, and we told them those ways, and they weren't used.
I got to believe, and I'll give you a chance to speak, Dr. Maliko, I got to believe that there's progress being done as we speak.
For some, there are.
Okay, for some. That's good. That's a start. How do we get the majority on board, right? And, you know, you've said it a couple of times, that this was rolled out too early. I started, not I, we talked about anti-bullying for years and years and years. And last year, a couple of my colleagues said, "We need to start." This was last year. We just had a meeting here in this room probably about a month ago. How much bullying happened over the year, the year, something like that. You can't, you got to get started. You got to get started and fix the problems along. There's no perfect systems. There's no perfect scenarios. But I would like to see, again, I personally would like to see, whatever glitches are coming up, whatever problems, continue the discussion, and let's, let's try to fix things. Under request for information, I'm going to ask for information, you know, if, you know, if what the teachers are, you know, asking is legit, let's, what is the cost? Let's, let's try to figure something out. But that's a whole different discussion. I'm not making, you know, recommendations at this board level, but I'm just having a communication here with you. So, any, Trustee Petrov, go ahead.
Yeah, I kind of have to agree here on several levels. One, when you first came before us several months ago, when this began, and there was a lot of concerns, and I was having a hard time with the concept. But I, and I said I was going to get into the classroom to see how it actually operated, but I wanted to give it time. I wanted to give it time because there, in any new program, there are going to be glitches that you're going to encounter. Now, I'm hearing two different issues here. One, contracts, financial one, and the other one, teacher burnout, teacher expertise of how to utilize the program and the concept. So there's two different stories here, basically, that have been kind of rolled into one complaint. I want to make sure that we understand, as President Barry is talking about, we don't want to throw the baby out with the bathwater, because we know, and we have asked over and over again, we see that there are issues that we need to address, and we can't continue to wait for something to work perfectly. One thing I would suggest, as what we're talking about, is first, we have to know, is there a dollar figure that, if you're saying one, one concept was thrown out because it was financially not expedient, and so they chose this avenue. If there is a better process, and it has a dollar figure to it, maybe we need to know what it is, and we, as a board, can say, "Look, we're willing to finance it." If we were willing to finance other programs to the tune of several million dollars, why can't we find a way to, if, if this looks like this is going to solve the issue. But when we have two different questions being asked here of, of how to approach this issue, I, A, don't want to just walk away from it and say, "Hey, look, you know, we got, we got a lot of complainers here. Let's, let's give up." Nobody wants to see that. I'm sure the teachers don't want to see that, because they're recognizing that they're the ones who are having the responsibility of trying to push these students through who are not succeeding the way they should be. We need to invest in that. So we've got to answer both those questions of, what does it take extra, and do we have the financial resources to invest in that, and should we include that as part of the conversation or not? And will that solve the other problem of what's happening in the classroom, and can we make it work at the end of the day? But we're also going to need some time. There's got to be a grace period here where everybody doesn't say, it's only been less than four months, basically. And I, you know, change is pain. I mean, a lot of people have a hard time switching gears, so to speak, and maybe not everybody's going to be successful with it. So we have to, but we have to take that time to work through it and not just automatically say it's a, it's a no-go. So I kind of agree that we need to continue to look at this, but we have to, we have to all be looking for the final results.
Trustee, let's.
So I had a couple of things written down that you were saying was not working.
So I had a couple of things written down that you were saying was not working. But then I also heard that you, there was something of a solution that you had kind of indicated, and it sounded like bringing in teachers specifically to teach the acceleration.
We actually have teachers in the district right now, who have done things similar to acceleration. And we have the data to prove that students have made more than a year's growth in that time. So we actually don't need to bring anybody in, we have experts in the district right now. And one problem is, they're not all being utilized. So we have teachers who are more than willing, who that, that kind of is what drives them, is taking these students who need extra support, and bringing them up where they need to be. So let's take these teachers who have a passion for this, and put them in there, and say, go ahead and do it. And we have some teachers who do much better with kids who are learning new concepts, and higher concepts, and let's let those teachers do that. We have what we need in the district right now to do it. It would just require some reorganization.
So they're already on the payroll, so it would cost nothing?
They would just have to be moved around.
And are these discussions happening right now, between?
We had those discussions, but those discussions shut down when they just, when the district decided this was the model they wanted to go ahead with.
Sure, sure. Well, I mean, you, you can see that this, this board, that's why I wanted to start this back and forth. We usually don't do this, but that's why I wanted to start this, so that the administration, and yourself, and your members are hearing this board say, we want these discussions to continue. We want to make adjustments, we want to support the adjustments. And depending, financially, if this is something we're able to do, we also want to, you know, take care of that, that part too. So, anybody else, any comments? Trustee Moser?
I have a question about, you mentioned that the teachers currently doing acceleration are not receiving training? Is that the con-
No, there's no training whatsoever.
Even prior to the program?
Correct.
When the program started?
Correct.
So that's something definitely that we really have to look at. Teachers who have not been trained on subject matter, that they might be ELA teachers and teaching math, I would-
Or science teachers teaching ELA, or gym teachers teaching math.
So how are we doing? Any cross-training, as far as those subjects and those areas? PLCs, is that being also incorporated?
So instructional coaches were tasked with basically creating like packets and stuff. So teachers have like packets of material, and they're given, let's say, different math problems or whatever. And then it's on the teacher to teach those concepts. And if the teacher's good at math, then they can teach that concept well. I literally had a teacher saying, I think I taught them the, the math wrong, because I didn't know it. And she didn't have time to go check with her math colleagues to make sure she had it right. Because you have to, the way it's been rolled out is, you do this page on Monday, you do this page on Tuesday. If kids don't get the Monday page, you just keep moving. So the teachers, if they're not taking the time to teach themselves, or to learn from their colleagues, I literally had a teacher say, I think I just taught them wrong.
Dr. Maleko, I think this would be a good time for you to chime in.
So, appreciate it.
Oh, sorry, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead. I know he wanted to-
So obviously, I think, and I appreciate, you know, President Barry and the others, as we started working on this stuff, we have to do this for our students. We have to do something, I think, President Martin, and I appreciate, again, the great meetings we've had. We, maybe we haven't come to consensus on everything yet, but we're still willing to work on it. I can tell you that there's a lot of time being spent between Ms. Farage, our team, our cabinet. There may be some disagreements and things on the contract, but we're trying to work through those as well, which is why we made some, some shifts. We will continue to do that. If we're hearing needs, we're willing to look at that. What I can tell you is, it's on the cabinet agenda. There's been a lot of time spent into this, and we're passionate about making it work, passionate about making adjustments, because we know we need it for the students. But I would like to continue to work with you, collaborate, moving forward, and see, you know, if we can come to consensus. And if not, we're going to continue, you know, we're not going to get into negotiations here, but we will continue to, you know, analyze the contract and, and see those different areas that, there may be some disagreements, and how can we adapt those implementations. But the bottom line, I think we agree, and everyone has said it, is that we need to do this for our students, and that's why we're all doing it together. And appreciate, you know, the teachers who, and you, Ms. Martin, for bringing the concerns up. Because we want to know what the concerns are. But I do also know that it does take time when you, you know, get into anything, and we need to have some baseline data to see. And we want to hear those things, and I encourage you to keep bringing them up, you know, during our meetings that we have, because I've been listening, and I'm trying to, behind the scenes, work with my team to make some adaptations, and appreciate your leadership, too.
Thanks.
Trustee Thorpe, I'm sorry.
No, it would be really just repeating some of the things that were being said. We want to see students moving towards mastery of these materials. The board has been supportive in the past of doing this, and it sounds like we're still supportive of, of, of doing this. I wouldn't say it's a throwing money at the problem, but if it's going to help the students, the board will be able to find ways to come up with, with the funding. But we need some time to make sure what's working, what isn't work. If it's not working, what are the possible fixes to this? And some of that takes time.
Thank you very much. We're in the business of educating, you can't educate without teachers. So we, we welcome you, important like always. So, thank you.
Thanks, have a good evening.
You too. Next item, please.
Special reports, National Blue Ribbon, STEM, Dr. Glenn Maleko, Ms. Amal Alcadre, and Mr. Osama Baydu.
So I think they're going to come up for their presentation. I know Ms. Alcadre was a little under the weather, last minute, she couldn't make it. I'm sure she's disappointed. But I did have the pleasure to go, it was about a month ago now, or almost a month ago, for the award. And they're very strict to the amount of people who can go. Wish we could bring students, but you're not allowed. So it's the principal, teacher, and superintendent. We represented the district, and we're very proud of this award that you guys have received. And it is, you know, a testament to the district. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Baydu.
Thank you so much. Correct, yes, Ms. Alcadre's not here, must have been bad turkey. But I guess we survived. Dr. Maleko, President Barry, trustees, thank you so much for having us here today. We are truly honored. In the 10 years that we've been in existence since 2014 to 2024, this is our second NBR, National Blue Ribbon. And one of the things, as we go through the presentation tonight, you'll see that, you know, you can only get it once every five years. So, and hopefully, as our students here, you're going to hear from them, because we feel very strongly about learning about STEM through their lens, you know, what is, what's their experience. And also, I'd like the teacher perspective, because really, that's where the magic happens, right? It's the students and the teachers. So we are, we greatly appreciate this opportunity. We know that, that the pathways to get here are not easy. In fact, the Secretary of Education, federal government can announce up to 420 schools nationally. And so they have basically announced only 356 this year, because the criteria is so strict, they're not going to just fill those spots. They're actually going to take those schools that are in position and announce them. You know, just in the state of Michigan alone, there was only 12, and only one middle school. And we happen to be the number one middle school in the state of Michigan. So, the, the journey for our second National Blue Ribbon. So again, it's every five years, and this is the second one. As Hattie Nasser here is going to talk to you, they're aiming for a third one in five years, right? So we're planning on going back to Washington DC. So the pathways are, you either get it for academic achievement, excellence in academics, or you're closing the achievement gap between the struggling learners and your top achievers. The, both National Blue Ribbons have been awarded to STEM for academic excellence. So that's kind of like where we're at at this point. Our test scores are a top 3% of the state for the past six years. That includes during the pandemic. During the pandemic, there was no loss of instruction, no loss of learning, as our scores indicated. So, in the state of Michigan alone, there's 4,400 schools, you know, so only 12 received this honor. That puts us like, 0.2% of the, 0.26% of the schools in the state of Michigan got. That's the less than 1% that are recognized. Again, in the state of, nationwide, there's 130,000 schools. Only 356 were recognized, and again, that equates to 0.27%. So we're very grateful for that. So right now, I'd like for two of our wonderful eighth graders, because they've been with us for the last two years, this is the third year, I want you to hear from their voices, what STEM means. Please. Hattie Nasser?
Hello, ladies and gentlemen. It's an honor to be speaking here today to all of you. My name is Hattie Nasser of STEM Middle School.
Hello, my name is Miriam Abdulha, also of STEM Middle School.
Tonight, we are here to say that we are proud to accept the National Blue Ribbon with honor, grace, and humility.
And also, a great thanks to all the staff at STEM Middle School, and a great applause for all the students who worked hard for this award. Now, without further ado, let us begin on our STEM experience.
I loved my elementary school, and I always will. And all of the teachers there are amazing, and offered me so many learning opportunities. And I feel the same way about STEM. They've always pushed me to achieve my best. And always, I feel that I am elevated in my learning with my peers around the district. And this is thanks, in no little part, to all of the amazing teachers and staff that we are grateful to have, and we enjoy having in our building.
The teaching staff at STEM is like no other on earth. From ELA to STEM apps, science to mathematics, truly, each teacher is a master in their field. The projects and assignments aren't just busy work. They are genuine challenges that require problem-solving skills and an advanced thought process.
At STEM, we feel at home. When you're in elementary school, you get a mix of students from all over, that you get to know for the next five years. Everyone is unique and different in so many ways, with a range of interests. And it's not a bad thing, it's a wonderful thing. But at STEM, because everyone has a similar mindset and focus, it makes it feel like a place where students are able to achieve their best with their peers who have the same goals and mindset. Plus, making friends is a lot easier when everyone has the same interests, and bonding over work is even easier.
You could sort of think of it like a small village, where everyone is working together on the same goals, and everyone knows everyone else. STEM is our home. This makes STEM a stellar place to learn. Everyone works as a whole with the same mindset. STEM truly is one of, if not the greatest center for true learning and growth in the whole of Michigan, if not the entire US.
At STEM, science, technology, engineering, and math, as the name would suggest, are a main focus in our work. And that is reflected in what we do at STEM. For example, in STEM Applications class, we did a boat regatta, something that, at first, seemed impossible to us. To ferry three or more students across an Olympic-sized swimming pool using nothing but cardboard and tape was quite the challenge.
However, though, as we learned principles and researched, we figured out that it wasn't so hard. After brainstorming, modeling, testing, and a lot of research, we finally built our boats. Some made it, and some didn't, sinking spectacularly to the bottom of the DHS swimming pool. But all of us certainly learned, and that is what makes STEM STEM. We learn, take on, and conquer.
Thank you to the STEM and staff students, and their parents, who raised all of them, for your hard work and effort. We are proud to bear the Blue Ribbon for a second time, and here's to hoping for a third. Thank you for your time, and have a great night.
You.
I'm so sorry, I did not mention Miriam Abdulhaq over here, and Hattie Nasser, those are two students. My apologies. Thank you so much. We had planned for Ms. Amal Alcadre, Director of the Diamond Heights Campus, to be here, but she's obviously sick. The other thing worth noting is that STEM follows the same exact curriculum as every other middle school in the state of Michigan. The only, the only exception, or the only difference is the rigor and the pace that we move at. And so these students, all of them have done a phenomenal job, the parents have been very supportive, and they've made sure that they don't negotiate excellence, that they're always after that pursuit. I'd like to ask Ms. Frezel over here to kind of talk about her lens as the team leader at STEM.
Thank you. I also want to thank our students. It's kind of getting late for them, so we appreciate them sticking around to have their say. There's something that I want to talk about with climate and culture at STEM, and it builds off of something that Miriam and Hattie said. And that is, I've had so many parents say that our students have found their people. And things that they would not be able to talk about at their elementary schools, they have students that accept them for that. And as a result, our students are excited to come to school every day. We've had parents talk about how their students in elementary school just didn't feel as safe and accepted there, and we're glad that they have that experience here. We equate that to so many different things. The huge support that our families give us, the dedication our students have to learning something new every day, even when it's difficult, and the staff at STEM in general. We are a very small staff, and we work together seamlessly. If Hattie's having a problem in science, I know about it by the time he gets to ELA, and I can kind of coach him through that, if he's having a bad day. We are so tight that, I was a little late this morning, I normally am in the parking lot by 6:20, 6:24, and three of the staff members were already texting me, where are you? Are you okay? Do we need to come and get you? And that happens with us, that's how tight we are. And as a result, we're able to offer that one-on-one, team, family mentality. When a group leaves us in eighth grade, we know everyone, I have seen them for three years of instruction. And every year, it's tears, and more tears, and more tears. Not with just the students who are crying, even though they leave, live like around the block from each other, but from us too. And we really appreciate the district's support in supporting a program like this, and offering our students an opportunity like this also. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And just a, kind of like a few pictures here to talk about, like Washington DC. We were able to make it to Ms. Rashida Thleib's office, where Glenn got to ask for a few more dollars for our school system here. On stage, obviously, we accepted the award, and we got a picture of us preparing for the dance, because one of the requirements is, that as you go across the stage, you have to show some dance moves. We're not going to do it right now. But if you saw, but if you saw the videos, we did pretty good, right, Glenn? And then, obviously, we took the, the sign to the Capitol, to the Washington Monument, and even in front of the White House. Again, we just really want to say thank you to the leadership of the board, to the district leadership, for allowing us the opportunity and supporting us through our efforts to have excellence in education. And we do look forward for a third National Blue Ribbon in five years. Have a great night.
Mr. Baydu, can you introduce us to the other two students, please?
We have Hattie Nasser's student.
Yes.
Her sister in sixth grade, who did not know she'd be standing up here, we kind of roped her in.
She's holding that proudly.
Right? We told her to be on a whiteet.
Okay.
She was just happy with standing. We have Leah, whom is an eighth grade student, who's been with us all three years, who dropped in to see us, and also didn't know she'd be pulled up in front of everybody. So we thank all four of them for being here tonight.
Great. Any comments on the board? Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Oh, wait, I'm sorry.
Just real quick, I had the opportunity to work with the, the staff of STEM when my son was there. And I've never seen another school that has been so interconnected with that staff as I did. If, if there was a concert, all the teachers were there, not just the band teacher. And they're always there to support each other. So like Ms. Ms. Frezel said, it was an amazing environment. So thank you for all you do for the students of the district.
And Jim, I didn't require it. Didn't require that you show up. Yeah, thank you so much.
Congratulations again. Dr. Maleko?
Yeah, David has a little surprise here, so we need to stay. And again, thank you to the staff, students, for a great job. But we have a little reveal here. And you know what, since they didn't go to Washington, we'll do this, David.
Yeah, sure.
Okay? And then, we need some of our board trustees, whoever would like to, maybe Trustee Thorpe and Trustee McDonald, who, and then others, if you'd like to do this reveal, but we'll do the picture. if you'd like to do this reveal, but we'll do the picture.
You don't want to keep missing Jim? I can't turn a little bit.
You know what?
Why'd you keep pulling my mouth?
All right, now you can take it.
Come back over here. Board members, if you'd like to do the honors here of revealing our board.
David likes the positive surprises.
See, Mary, you were trying to peek. There was nothing under the one you were looking at.
Yeah, I see that now.
I would just like to point out that there are two empty spots left here.
Hint, hint.
And then, and then we have to renovate and redecorate again, I guess.
Okay, great. Thank you.